Good morning and welcome to a special meeting of the Milton Select Board on February 1st, 2024. At the outset, I just want to note that Mr. Wells is unable to be here today through no fault of his own. Unfortunately, he had to attend a funeral, so he's unable to be with us today. Item two is public comment. We allow 21 minutes for public comment by policy, up to 21 minutes, up to three minutes per person. Mr. Milano times the 21 minutes, I time the three minutes. And since we are a hybrid meeting today, we just go down the list in order by the hands being raised in the, by the attendees in the hybrid meeting. And so we'll do that, and that's our normal practice. We'll just do that. We'll go down the list. If you want to participate in public comment and you're online, just raise your hand with the raised hand symbol. If you're attending by phone, it is star nine, star nine, just to put star nine to participate in the public comments. So first, public comment, we have Chris Hart. So you could promote Mr. Hart.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can. If you just give your name and address and then go ahead and get started.
Great. Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Chris Hart. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 5 and I live on 55 Woodland Road. I'm supporting a yes vote on Article 1 on February 13th. And I was struck by some of the comments in last week's discussion about the Attorney General's January 16th document preservation letter. So I want to take a couple of minutes and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to provide my perspective. I should just start to point out my professional background. I've been a litigator for close to 20 years. The entire time primarily as a civil and criminal defense lawyer in private practice. And for that entire time, a regular part of my case docket has been defending my clients against investigations initiated by state attorney generals offices, the Department of Justice, and various state and federal agencies. The letter we received from the Attorney General's office follows the patterns I've seen over these last two decades defending my clients. It was a very clear warning to the town about the office's intention to pursue enforcement. This is not a scare tactic. It's not extortion. It's not fear mongering. It's how the AG's office works. It's how law enforcement agencies work. It's common for agencies contemplating enforcement to tell potential defendants, and the town of Milton is a potential defendant, what they intend to do if the potential defendant does not comply with the legal requirement. It's also common for agencies to say that if we choose to reverse course and comply with the law, the agency will work with us. And it's also common to tell potential defendants not to destroy documents, since all those documents may be subject to discovery in litigation. I don't think it's helpful to sugarcoat this letter. If I received a letter from the IRS telling me that I might be subject to a lien if I don't pay my late taxes, that's not extortion. It's a warning and an invitation to cure my non-compliance. If I'm stopped by a Milton police officer for speeding and I provided a warning not to speed in the future or also get a ticket, that's not fear mongering. That's an invitation to change my behavior or face a penalty. These are common ways that law enforcement acts. I ask that this select board simply be upfront with the town about the risks. Obviously, people on the select board differ on whether to vote yes or no. It's simply a question about being upfront. The AG's office did not send us a happy letter pledging collaboration. I'm going to quote the language. First quote.
Mr. Hart, 30 seconds, sir.
Thank you very much. The Attorney General's office stands ready to work with any municipality, and it goes on, "that seeks to meet its legal responsibilities." Next quote, "Our strong preferences for cooperation and collaboration," and it goes on, "within the bounds of the law." And the last quote, "My office will not hesitate to compel compliance with the MBTA Communities Act through legal action if necessary, should the municipality refuse to comply. We can't ignore or wish away that risk."
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Matt Morong. You could promote Mr. Morong. And if you could unmute yourself and give your name and address, and you have three minutes, I'll let you know at 2 minutes and 30 seconds.
All right. Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is Matt Morong. I live at 136, excuse me, 136 Elliot Street. I want to bring about a matter to the board's attention, kind of late breaking news. Yesterday, I received a letter from the Sun Property Group informing me that my home, which is located right at the corner, I've said this over and over, right at the corner of Elliot Street and Central Ave, meets the property dynamics that appear to be a good fit for them, and offering to go start a conversation about the purchase of my home. This is not surprising, given that there is a state law in effect that declares MBTA communities shall have a zoning district within one half mile of an MBTA station. I'm within a few hundred feet of Central Ave with a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. Currently, Milton is not in compliance with this law. This emphasizes the importance of a yes vote on February 13th. By voting yes, residents get a zoning plan that preserves the character of existing neighborhoods and respects the scale of those places by placing strict limits on heights and densities, minimizes incentives for teardowns by creating zoning that matches the parameters currently in place, and is the result of an extensive public process. If we find that this law needs tweaking in the future, there is opportunity for that action. Until this vote occurs, the transit area, starting from Blue Hill Ave all the way down Elliot Street, including the Columbines and the Milton Hill Historic District, will be under a threat of incompatible development at a developer's in-court swims. By voting no, the town will continue to be out of compliance with this law, leaving it vulnerable to the actions of real estate developers who do not care about preserving Milton's neighborhoods. In fact, no has no plan. We've been hearing about making this plan better, but after months of this argument, I haven't heard a single concrete proposal for how any opponent to this law intends to refine it and still comply with the guidelines set forth by HLC. The only way to save our neighborhoods against this type of development action is through a yes vote. Milton has an opportunity to control its destiny on February 13th, and a yes vote is the only way to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morong. Next is Elizabeth Dillon.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could give your name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes, and I'll give you an indication in 2 minutes and 30 seconds.
Thanks. Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Dillon. I live on 79 Governor's Road. I'm here this morning to talk about speed humps and with a word of thanks and hope. I wanted to say thank you to the people of Governor's Road who have trusted me, starting about a year and a half ago or so, to do something about speeding and driver aggression on governors. I started out knowing very little about this issue, except that I wanted to help. Thanks to Fred Kibble, Ryan Mulcahy, Amy Robbins, Kate Finn, Heather Bergen, Mary Beth Chulo, Sarah Fagan, John Duff, and all the other neighbors who have worked together with me on this. I wanted to say thank you to the East Milton Neighborhood Association for your unwavering support and belief as we began on this journey together. Thank you to the members of the Traffic Mitigation Committee in 2020 for realizing the problems with traffic in our town, including Governor's Road, and setting the stage for the select board to be able to mitigate traffic hotspots. Chair Zulus, you were a key part of the Traffic Mitigation Committee, and I thank you. Thank you to the town meeting members who voted overwhelmingly to appropriate funds for traffic study and mitigation in our annual town meeting last year. Thank you to the Traffic Commission and especially DPW Chair Chase Berkeley, who gets a lot of complaints about traffic, but now that he's been given the resources by the town, has tirelessly worked cooperatively with us to get this done. Thank you to the police Chief King and Lieutenant Alba, whose support for traffic mitigation is unwavering. We have seen increased enforcement in East Milton and on our street, and we appreciate you. Thank you to Fire Chief Madden and the entire Milton Fire Department for their unwavering support of our community and of our street. And thank you from the people of Governor's Road to Beta Engineering for studying our traffic problem and for finding real solutions that will not push traffic onto the side streets, but will instead be the first step in addressing the speeding crisis on our street in East Milton. Thank you to our neighbors on Grafton, Garden, Gardner, Plymouth, Alden, and State for their support of the Speed Bump Program. We promise that if we get speed bumps, we will work cooperatively with you on next steps to address volume in East Milton and work cooperatively to reduce cut-through traffic from Quincy and beyond. I meant it when I said I would give you my cell phone number. I plan to continue to voice my concerns, and as some of your TMM, I feel compelled to help. And of course, most importantly, a very special thank you to the select board, for Chair Zulus for meeting with me and Ryan Mulcahy in person to address our concerns, to Richard Wells, who's not here today, but who spent a long time speaking with me on the phone, to Ben Zoll for speaking with me as well, and to Roxanne and Erin, although I've not had the chance to speak with you directly on this issue yet, I appreciate your understanding and anticipated support.
30 seconds, Ms. Dillon.
These speed humps are 50 years coming, and I invite every one of the people I mentioned here today to a neighborhood block party on a date to be determined as soon as these speed humps are hopefully installed. Today, I'm confident that you will vote yes, and the town of Milton will have delivered on its promise to the people of East Milton, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon. Next is Maggie Oldfield. You could promote Ms. Oldfield.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you could give your name and address, and I'll give you an indication in 2 minutes and 30 seconds. You have up to three minutes.
Great, thank you. Hi, I'm Maggie Oldfield. I live at 397 Hillside Street. And on Tuesday, I received an invite from a friend asking to join him at the Milton Mark Center for a campaign rally where the guest speaker was Lieutenant Governor. And the invite plainly stated to share with, quote, "three of your contacts," end quote. So I went on the provided link and I reserved my spot. I then printed out the electronic ticket. And just as I was heading out to the Art Center, I received an email saying I was disinvited. I think it's a shame that people with different opinions were intentionally excluded from listening to a state official talk about something so important that is going to affect all of us. We may disagree on topics, but I feel like we all should be inclusive. And the select board has publicly proclaimed that Milton is a no-place-for-hate community. And I feel like this disinvitation was a pretty hateful act and extremely exclusionary. So I do hope you reach out to the organizers of that event and share your proclamation with them. I do also hope that the courtesy of an invitation was extended to all board members, and I would hope that that would have been posted on your public meeting calendar, because I am wondering if any of the board members attended the event and if any open meeting law violation occurred, especially since you guys, the topic of the event was a subject matter that you guys are discussing and voting on today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oldfield. Anyone else for public comment? I see Mr. Morong's hand up. Although you may have had a little time left, Mr. Morong, I don't know if, we don't typically have people come back a second time. So, oh, I see your hand is still up. I hesitate to go back because I'm not sure exactly how much time you had. So if it's all, it's all the same to you, oh, there you go, so the hands down. So that would have, I think there was some time left, but that would have been a little bit difficult to calculate. We don't typically do that. So anyone else for public comment? Just to raise the hand symbol or press star six nine, or star nine, rather, if you're on the phone. Give everyone just a minute. And I don't see anyone. All right. Item three is discussion approval Traffic Commission report regarding recommendations. And the first is for Governor's Road Traffic Calming. And so I think we have Mr. Berkeley. So, Mr. Berkeley, do you want to lead us through this?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you, and thank you everyone for having us today. So yes, so the Traffic Commission met last Thursday, January 25th, and there's a series of recommendations that came out of that meeting, two of which require a vote in amendment to the traffic rules and orders of the town. And then the item that's first on your agenda, Governor's Road, we could talk about now. So essentially, it was recommended by the Traffic Commission that a pilot program be conducted to install speed humps on Governor's Road at various locations between the Quincy border and the, in Edgehill Road. And just so you know, so we do have our traffic engineer, Beta Jeff Maxtounis, the principal that we work with, is on the call today. He's available and has the presentation that was provided at the Traffic Commission meeting ready. Totally up to you if you want to see it, or have him walk through it, but he's available, just so you know. And so I, you know, thank you to Ms. Dillon for providing some of the background. And we have been working with the neighborhood for quite some time now on how to address numerous reports of driver aggression, safety concerns, and one of the reasons that we selected Governor's Road is it has been highlighted historically in many reports as a congestion point in town. The numbers certainly back that up. And it being a road that's shared with Quincy, so the other half of the road is in Quincy, and there's been several traffic calming solutions already implemented on their end, speed humps being one of them, and along with the truck restriction for commercial vehicles. The fellow, it was proper at this time, now that we have construction funding in our budget and also funding for traffic engineering services, which we didn't have in years past, to advance this to the next step. So I'll leave it up to you if you want to have Beta jump on. If not, I can walk through the other two recommendations, or if you want us to speak about governors in more detail, happy to do that.
Yeah, maybe, why don't we take them separately? So why don't we focus first on governors? Comments or questions from the members? Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chase, thanks so much for this, and thank you for all the time that you've spent with the neighbors over there. I, you know, this is a serious issue, and I'm glad we're getting to it. I know when we met last, we had a group of neighbors from the adjacent street down. I can't remember. It's not Otis, but it's the one between. But do you know, I know that there was sort of, that work's been done on Governors, and I think the concern was that if we put speed humps there, that then that might push the cut-through traffic. Obviously, we don't want to hold progress on one street before we make everything perfect, because that's not a good system of government. But I'm just wondering if you've also thought about those adjacent streets, starting to put in measures for them as we go through the process for them as well?
Yeah, so that, great point, Mr. Zoll. So that topic was discussed during the Traffic Commission meeting. We had a number of residents from Grafton Avenue and some of those surrounding streets, Plymouth and State Street. And so the speed humps that are in place on Governor's Road already certainly haven't deterred the volume. So we're not anticipating on a traffic pattern change from installing them. But we did pledge to monitor pre- and post-conditions. So what we'll do is take traffic counts on all the surrounding streets prior to installing them, and then do a check after the fact to make sure that some unanticipated effect doesn't happen. But they're not anticipating to change the behavior of drivers. You know, most of those drivers are typically following GPS apps now. And unless you can severely alter the driving time down a road, which speed humps won't really do to a point where it would change the pattern for which they send a commuter in through that direction.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, definitely supportive of putting the speed humps on there. How many speed humps would they be, bumps, and how long is this pilot program of that? And then I would say a couple of points are that traffic in this town is one of the biggest issues that we hear from people on. And anywhere you go, traffic is a huge concern to residents. We have a lot of cut-through traffic in Milton, and this has been identified for a long time. And of course, we want to make sure that whatever's done there, we have to look at the surrounding streets, because we don't know what the impact will be. And I would also want to say that I hope that our board will, going forward, really support a lot of the other neighborhoods that are having these issues with cut-through traffic in numbers of cars and speed of cars. I know that over by the hospital and some of those cut-through streets have been issues. People on Spafford and I think Buckingham and Clifton and all of those streets, over near me, Brushell Road, this Canton Ave, my own street, my neighbor's streets. So I just, going forward, I really hope that this board will tune into that and be supportive of changes on these streets as they come up that are needed because of these issues that have happened on Governors. There are a lot of issues all over town with this too. So, but yeah, if you could just please get back to me on how many bumps you're talking about and how long this pilot program would be for. Thank you.
Can I take that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, oh, please, sure.
Yeah. So we've identified four possible locations. So some of the things to consider are, you know, are there manholes in the street? We don't want to affect drainage in any way. Where do people's driveways line up and where are the parking spots? So there's four, you know, possible locations. Likely, the number will be three, given the length of the street. Something to be worked out in the final design, but that's the thinking right now.
I think there was also a question on the timing for the pilot.
Yep. How long? How long it would go for?
So we don't have a fixed timeframe, but we did discuss at the Traffic Commission meeting was at least several months. And we wanted to make sure that that observation happened while school was in session. We don't want to look at traffic patterns over the summer, because they tend to get very light. So ideally, we could build these in the spring, assuming we get approval, and will give us some time to watch the effect and determine if it was successful or not.
Thank you.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Chase, for being here today. I too live on a cut-through street. And we'll get to it later in this traffic section. But when I first moved to the town, I emailed the select board, because I moved in with, at that time, I had four little kids. There was, I live on a street that probably has, I don't know, maybe 12 houses on it, maybe 18, and pretty much in every house, there was small children. I emailed asking for speed humps back in the day and was told that that is not something that the town of Milton does. Traffic is a huge problem across this town, and you know, I am, I feel for those on Governor's Road. I've driven it. I've done that cut-through a few times, not every time, but I have done it a few times. And I've seen the parking situation and how tight that road is to begin with. I wanted to know if the Traffic Mitigation Committee has come up with any guidelines regarding speed humps moving forward? Because, you know, honestly, the last thing we need is speed humps going everywhere where there's a traffic concern. The town, the street that I live on, the town decided to do a bump out, which I'm going to hold my comments on that when we get to my street, which I think is the next item. It has not been a great success here. So I feel for those on Governor's Road. I understand that street, you know, street humps are what's probably going to be the best. I wish that I had those on my street instead of the design that was created. But I just am concerned that this is going to set a precedent, you know, where, as Member Musto said, there is traffic concerns all over this town. It is the biggest thing that we get email about. And, you know, I appreciate being on the Governor's Road email chain. I read all the little emails that get sent in that chain. But I think that this is a bigger item, and I think that, I think that we need to have some policies in place so that we don't end up, you know, with speed humps on every street. So, Mr. Berkeley, if you could tell me if there's a plan in place or a plan that's going to be in place regarding the use of speed humps and when they are the right course of action for the town.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Yes, so that was certainly discussed by the Traffic Commission, that there needs to be some type of metric to determine if and when. So speed humps are what we call vertical traffic calming solutions. There are also horizontal traffic calming solutions, which is narrowing and necking and alignment changes. So it's definitely not a solution for every street in town. There are surrounding communities that have identified which streets are eligible for which type of treatments. We'd like to get to something similar to that. So there's an expectation right off the bat that if you live on Reeddale Road, we're not going to build speed humps in front of your house, because, you know, there's a high-speed limit and it's a four-lane, you know, major roadway through town. So we are hoping that this pilot helps us drive those metrics and determine a form of policy.
Great. Thank you so much, Chase.
So I will add, the Traffic Mitigation Committee a few years ago engaged in an extensive public process to hear from the residents. We had several public forums. We had a Wiki map on the website to elicit responses about different hotspots in town. And in the final report, we identified, I believe it was six, six to eight hotspots in town. And the goal was to set up working groups for each of those hotspots. Now, through the pandemic, and it has been difficult to get some traction to establish these working groups for the hotspots. But the Governor's Road initiative here is the model. It's the residents getting together with the Traffic Commission, getting together with our traffic consultant, and working on a proposal that works for that hotspot. And so my hope is that this will begin a process for the other hotspots in town to establish these working groups that were recommended by the Traffic Mitigation Report to try to address those specific problems for those specific hotspots. And so I think this is the model that we hope for. It's come up with a result that I think is a good result. And Chase, I just want to make clear that what we're voting on today is the pilot for the traffic calming, which is the speed humps with the monitoring of the adjacent streets.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. All right. Any other comments or questions on item 3A?
Mr. Chair, should we vote on these recommendations individually or as a group?
I think individually is a good idea.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion then that we approve the Traffic Commission's recommendations for Governor's Road as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? This will be, all those in favor, this will be roll call vote, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulus, yes. Thank you, everyone. And Chase, one thing we didn't talk about, that we talked about in the Traffic Commission's meeting was the timing for this. And this is not going to take a lot of time, because number one, we have the money. And number two, I think the idea is to do it as soon as we can, perhaps early March, but maybe you can fill us in on the timing for this?
Yes, so the construction piece of it is actually pretty simple and not very time-consuming. So it's really a matter of us ordering the materials and lining up the contractor. Our goal will be for early spring, just contractor availabilities, you know, pretty tight these days. So now that we have approval, we should get that pending on the calendar so as we can.
Okay, so we can hope, we can, best case, sometime in March?
Yeah, it's in March, April. You know, we'll aim to get it in as early as possible.
Okay, yeah, let's try to do it as quickly as possible to get it going. Okay. All right. Anything else on that? Item 3A. We go to item 3B, which is 190 Thatcher Street Handicap Parking Space Request. This is on the Lincoln Street side. So Chase, do you want to tee that one up for us?
Yes, so we received a request to create a one handicap parking spot. It's actually on Lincoln Street. It's the side of 190 Thatcher Street. There's an occupant of that home with cerebral palsy that indicated to us that the shortest possible distance from his vehicle to his front door would be preferable. And that happens to be the very first spot on Lincoln Street. So we put it on the agenda last week. No one from the public commented at all on it, but the Traffic Commission did support it. He did have the request in writing from the owner of the home. And this is something that we have done in other locations in town when that request come up. We just put one caveat on it, that it be, the person lives there and removed once that, if in once that person doesn't live there anymore. Uh, we just put one caveat on it that it be, while the person lives there and removed once that, if if and once that person um doesn't live there anymore.
Thank you, Chase. Comments or questions from the members, Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I live on Lincoln Street, um, as Mr. Berkeley knows. Um, I did not get any notice of this meeting. Um, I tried and tracked everything. In fact, I just spoke to Mr. Milano about how to subscribe to um our town's calendar so that I can get all the meetings posted on like my calendar. It's a very complicated thing, but I did not know that this was on the agenda for the traffic mitigation, um, nor did any of my neighbors. Um, nobody on Lincoln Street was notified. As I've, I've said, there's not many houses on this street, there's probably eighteen to twenty. I I could do the count right now, but I haven't had enough coffee. Um, a few years ago, you did traffic mitigation on my street, um, and it was one of the hotspots. Um, that was identified because we are the cut through for Pierce uh Middle School. We are the drop off street. Um, oftentimes, we can't leave our driveway during school pickup or drop off, especially if it's snowing or raining. Forget it, you might as well sit and watch the traffic for at least twenty to thirty minutes. Um, in that traffic mitigation, you did bump outs on our road. Um, a nice big sidewalk on one side and a few parking spaces on the other side. I live on the other side, I live on the same side as the handicap spot that is in in um up for uh approval today. And um there are probably for the eighteen to twenty houses on this road, there are probably, I don't know, I wanna say eight parking spots, uh, Chase, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not many. Um, when delivery trucks come, they have no idea how to navigate this street because, you know, usually you can pull over to the side on both sides of the street, you can't on my street. So they park in the middle of the street, traffic gets backed up. Oil trucks come down the street, they park in the middle of the street because again, they don't either have the space to pull in front of another house or there is not a parking space in front of the house that they need to get to. The street is extremely congested still to this day. Garbage trucks have ruined the bump out on the Thatcher Street side because they can't make the cut to turn down the the road. So the new sidewalk that we have is completely cracked and chipping and breaking already. Um, the garbage trucks live at the parking lot at the end of my street, um, which is for school parking. Um, so it's, it's not an ideal street. I feel for this person that lives there at the end of the street and understand that they want a designated parking spot. However, the two parking spots that are there are for one, two, three, four, five houses. Five houses, there's those two spots right there. And so if anybody has guests coming over for the night, there's nowhere to park on our street. There's nowhere for people to be unless they drive to the end, park in the lot that we're not supposed to park in, even though construction vehicles are there all the time. And walk down the street, which is what I tell my people to do, I'm like that, just get your steps in, you know, go park there. This is not an ideal street to put this handicap spot. I understand that it's the closest to their front door. Um, I know exactly, I I think it's a rental house, I don't know that it's uh occupancy, owner occupied. Um, but it is a two family and it's, I believe it's a rental. I will vote in favor of this because my father has had to have a handicap spot and it's, you can't find him around town and I get it. But I think there needs to be some real consideration about what we're doing to the smaller streets that don't have sixty parents on it that are advocating for things. This street has been a nightmare for the town for, since I moved in here. And I gotta tell you, while I like the big wide sidewalk across the street and my family uses it every single day, it has not been an ideal situation for us and it has not calmed the traffic here. In fact, it has created more of a bottleneck and it has created a a place where nobody has anywhere to park. This street, you know, I I love it, but there's a lot of two families on this street. Um, a lot, I I don't even know, not hardly any of them are owner occupied, I think maybe three are. Um, but you got two, two homes, you got a driveway that fits maybe two cars and you've got four adults. You've got two other cars that need to park on the street. This is gonna totally back up our street even more and it's on the entrance to the street. Um, from Thatcher, so it's just, it's concerning. I've said my piece, I'm gonna vote for it because I feel for this person. Um, but this is absolutely not ideal and um and nobody's come back by and talked to the neighbors since we had this thing put in. Um, about our feelings about it and how it's working. So maybe we could do some follow up after we do some traffic mitigation, please, in places around town to see how the neighbors are surviving. Because I gotta tell you, if Amazon comes down our street, I don't know, at least six times a day, it, the traffic's completely backed up, you cannot leave your home. So that's it, that's my piece, I'm gonna go drink my coffee now, thank you, Mr. Berkeley.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Zoll.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, just a quick question, um, uh, Mr. Berkeley, do we, if it, if it is a rental or even if it's an owned unit, do we have a, how do we um determine when the residents moved out? I plan on voting for this, I'm just wondering about the process, um, you know, so that we would remove this spot.
Yeah, that's an excellent uh point to bring up because there there really is no official policy on these spots. So if you go to, say, the city of Boston, they have a two year um renewal requirement. And, you know, that's similar to us in other ways, like service home parking and stuff. But there's just so few of these spots amongst town, I don't think uh uh an official policy was ever drawn up for them. So, you know, I'll put the burden on, on my department and the police to monitor it. And if it appears that it's no longer being used, um, we'll engage with the the owner and and find out for sure.
It, it might be a good idea to think about, even if we don't have that many, if we, if we wanna put in like a two year uh which is sort of check in to make sure that a spot like that is still being used um appropriately.
Yeah, thank you, I agree.
Thanks.
The comments and questions on item three B?
The Mr. Chair, if nobody else, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Musto, if you wanted to say something, I was gonna make a motion to approve.
No, I was just gonna second.
Mister, uh, so Mr. Zulish, I make a a recommendation to approve the handy chat, uh, the handicap uh parking space for one ninety Thatcher as presented by uh by by Mr. Berkeley.
And I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, this will be, any, any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. Item three C is um the do not enter restriction at Elliot Street, um, at Blue Hills Parkway. Uh, Mr. Berkeley?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yes, so for quite a number of years, there's been a time restricted do not enter uh from Blue Hills Parkway onto Elliot Street, seven to nine AM, Monday through Friday. Um, during the uh MBTA track uh repair project back in October, uh, for construction purposes, those were removed so to allow the shuttle buses to enter the street during that period of time that were uh replicating the trolley service. And uh we were approached by a resident in that neighborhood that said, you know, we don't believe these restrictions are necessary anymore. Um, the, ever since the geometry of the whole interchange was done over and it was, you know, twenty fifteen era. Um, and so there's no way now for traffic coming from Blue Hill Ave to take a right onto Elliot Street as they could before, before all the curving was realigned. So uh at our November twenty twenty-three traffic commission meeting, we supported leaving the signs down for a trial period time. Uh, just keep an eye on things and have uh received no negative feedback whatsoever. So we took a, a formal uh vote last week to, to leave those signs down permanently.
So, so the motion would be um to remove, their recommendation is to remove the do not enter Monday through Friday, seven AM to nine AM restriction permit. That's the recommendation, yeah. Mr. Zoll?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, unless someone feels uh the need to speak about this as someone who used to live right off Elliot. I think um Mr. Berkeley is exactly right about the um the changing of that intersection and the uh subsequent aspect on traffic. So I uh would like to make a motion uh that we uh adopt the recommendation, that approve the traffic commission's recommendations for the removal of the do not enter restriction signs on Elliot Street and Blue Hills Parkway.
I'll second.
Questions been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zulish, yes. Item three D is um a uh, I guess it's a discussion about a proposal on Hollis Street and a request on Colorado. Um, Mr. Berkeley, do you wanna um give us an update on?
Sure, so those are two items uh that were brought to a meeting last week that uh we felt uh in the case of Hollis Street. So there was a proposal um by by a resident who lives there to make a portion of the street one way, citing um, you know, a lot of congestion and a lot of um near misses i- in the vicinity of the post office, rear driveway in the back of the art center, it being very narrow and it'd be a constant um flow of people parking and going to the post office. Um, so we didn't uh have any specific recommendations other than to, that we thought this was worthy of further study. Um, and and that's a similar conclusion on the Kaler Ave and Thatcher Street uh request. Um, that it it warrants more investigation, but no recommendations at this time.
Comments or questions on Hollis Street and Kaler Ave? Uh, Mr. Berkeley, what, um, do you have any sense on the timing uh for the the review of those uh, those two items?
So Hollis Street is one would probably ask for assistance through uh with beta uh to look at that because that's one example of where our new traffic model would be very helpful. So we can simulate a one-way traffic pattern change and and try to determine the effects of that in the surrounding neighborhood and surrounding streets. Um, the Kaler Ave and Thatcher, um, we're going to uh include that. So we have a grant uh application out for Warren Avenue right now to uh get some state money for improvements there. And we're hoping that we can roll in uh Warren Ave, Houston and Kaler Ave kind of all together in one package if if we receive that grant.
So, so, so this will, these reviews will take um, you know, some period of, some period of time, some period of months?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. Um, other comments or questions on item three D? Seeing on, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Berkeley. Uh, and we'll look forward to the next report from the traffic com, the traffic commission.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Uh, item four is a discussion vote on the February thirteenth uh ballot question. Um, uh, Mr. Wells, who through no fault of his own is unable to be here today, has requested that we delay a vote uh on this until um a meeting that he could attend. Um, the, w- w- we may not be able to have a meeting between now and February thirteenth because of schedules. I think we're gonna try, but we may not be able to. So, so my, my suggestion would be, uh, if the members wanna um discuss it and and, you know, uh, uh, discuss their views on it, uh, but maybe we delay a vote until uh if i- i- if and when we, we get a chance to meet before February thirteenth. Uh, that's my suggestion, Mr. Mr. Uh, Mr. Zoll?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I I agree with the uh that we should still discuss it. Um, my, I, I'm just wondering if we should have a, if there's a way to have a preliminary vote that we could subject to change if we can get another time? I I've been back and forth with Mr. Milano several times uh in the last couple of days to try to find a time. I hope that we can find a time that Mr. Wells can can chime in because I think his voice is an important one here. I I just don't want us to be in a position where we haven't taken an official position for the ballot because I think it is important that we do that.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I I would hope that we would wait, um, first of all, I just wanna back up. I'm wondering why we need to take a vote on this, this is going to the residents. And I think that um the residents shouldn't be necessarily influenced on a ballot initiative by um, by us as a board. I think people should be able to um look at information on both sides and make decisions. And I think that that's more of a democratic process. And um at this point in time, I don't know why we would, you know, be doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, um, so, so Mr. Zoll would like to take a conditional um vote. Um, Ms. Bradley, thank you for, I was just trying to work things, things through in my mind, but maybe you'll offer a suggestion that'll bring it all together.
Well, I haven't had that much coffee, chairs. Um, I, I, I'm gonna agree with Member Zoll. Um, I too, uh, let me just say, I, twenty minutes before this meeting was about to take place is when I was first approached to have another meeting on the topic. As Member Musto has said multiple times, I was prepared to take a vote today. I had no idea that we weren't gonna be taking a vote. At one point, I thought the meeting was gonna be canceled because Mr. Wells wasn't gonna be here. There has been plenty of time to think about this. And while I agree that having Member Wells's vote is important, I'm concerned that we're not gonna be able to, oh, look at that, an oil truck right now in the middle of my street. Um, I, I'm concerned that we won't be able to find a time. Sorry, my dog's gonna go off. Um, so I agree that we should take a conditional vote um today. And, and then if if we work it out um for next week, I know that, that when we were trying to plan this at our last select board meeting, this was the only date that we could find before February thirteenth. Um, I do think it's important that we um let the voters know where the select board stands as the um legislative governing body of the town. Um, I think that it is an important thing that we are the ones that put it forward to begin with at town meeting. And so I think it's important for us to um, to take a vote and say where we stand on something that we had put forward previously and was approved by two thirds of town meeting members. Um, I had been watching the planning board meetings and know that they have taken a vote, untaken a vote, possibly taken a vote again. Um, it's a little confusing of what they did earlier this week. Um, but they too have taken a stand on this um ballot question, or they did. Um, and so I think it is important to the residents that they hear from the two boards that um are the ones that are determining where the zoning is going.
Right, oh, Ms. Musto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering um if we do have an update on what the planning board did at their last meeting, I didn't watch it. Does anybody have an update, Mr. Milano, perhaps?
I have not, I have not viewed the meeting yet.
Yeah, I, 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 I haven't either, so I, I, I don't, I don't know, um, don't know. I think it was, yeah, I don't know.
I watched it, but I don't know that I am prepared to comment on it because I was really confused by it, honestly.
Okay. All right, well, um, uh, perhaps what we can do is uh if if people wanna take a vote, we could take it and we wanna respect um, uh, you know, Mr. Wells, because certainly there's no fault of his own, maybe couldn't be here today. Um, uh, maybe we would make a vote subject to reconsideration at a subsequent meeting uh prior to, prior to February thirteenth. Maybe we do that and then we could, we could, uh, we could have a discussion, we can have that conditional vote. And then if we're able to, to uh assemble prior to the thirteenth, then we can, uh, we can, uh, we can, uh, we can reconsider that. Mr. Zoll?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. I, I think that seems like a, a good uh compromise. And I think just to sort of uh respond a bit to uh Ms. Musto's points, I, you know, the select board often uh takes official stances, you know, when we have the warrant for town meeting, we take an official stance. Um, this is in fact a special town meeting, so I think we should be treating it exactly the same. Um, we would always take a uh a stance on uh on articles in the warrant for a town meeting. As this is considered a special town meeting, I think it's entirely appropriate for the select board uh to continue its practice of of taking a stand on a particular article. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Musto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's important to note that we're a five-member board and we're missing a member who has clearly said that he wanted to weigh in on this issue. I think that, you know, it's such an important issue for the town, it's probably one of the biggest issues before us. I think that it's, you know, not a good precedent for us to sort of make something and then conditionally we'll hear what he has to say. I don't think that's, that's right at this point in time. Um, we've often made changes to our schedules to accommodate people. Um, and I don't think this is the right message to do. So for me, I I could not support doing that. Thank you.
Right, and and I would say we're making every effort to try to uh, to try to coordinate all, everyone's schedules so that we can meet prior to February thirteenth. But uh, but it is, as you know, Ms. Musto, it's a challenge. So uh, so I think there's every intention to do that. Uh, at the same time, we do have members that do want to, to want to speak on this and this could be the last opportunity uh to do that. And so, so, uh, so I, you know, I, I think if we Uh so I, you know, I I think if we if we allow the members to speak and they can speak uh with a a vote and make it a conditional vote. And then if we're able to to meet again, and I hope we are uh prior to the thirteenth, then we can uh then we can reconsider it. So I I think that's a fair way to do it, just just because of the timing and. And uh we may not have a chance to meet because of schedules prior to the thirteenth. We're gonna try, but everybody's we're. It hasn't been as easy as we'd uh as we'd uh we'd hope, but we'll uh continue to make every effort to try to. Try to change the schedule and and meet again prior to the thirteenth. So, all right, so why don't we, why don't we um uh. If we wanna address the substance, if we wanna address the substance to this, I don't know if any member wants to address the substance of it. Uh item four, um I, Mr. Zol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I I'd I'd like to take a couple of minutes and I I'd ask the board's indulgence for that. Um and you know, I I am very sympathetic to Mr. Wells. I'm very sorry for his loss and my thoughts with him and whoever else is mourning uh this morning. It's never uh a great reason to miss a meeting, uh but I think, you know, we we are all living busy lives and trying our best. But I, so I'd just like to s- speak for a few minutes because I think this is an important issue. And I think the residents deserve to know what the truth is about this issue. Uh and I'm worried frankly, uh that there's been a lot of misinformation. That's been circulating about uh about this issue. And so we've heard mul- from multiple people why this is the right thing to do. Uh because it provides uh housing diversity for our young families, for seniors uh looking to downsize. Uh because it provides more affordable options for folks in town, not affordable housing per se, but that's part of it. Uh and because it prevents us from losing hundreds of thousands of dollars uh in in state monies. Millions of dollars, potential future state state funding, as well as the legal fees. As well as the the fines that we may be subjected to, and the court costs that we're gonna be subjected to. I think any Milton taxpayer could look very easily and say that we do not have the budget to absorb those kinds of losses. To fight and fight that our town council has already told us we're gonna lose. But we've heard all those reasons why voting yes is a good thing. Uh it's the legally, morally, and fiscally responsible thing to do. So I thought I would address this uh ad which has come up in the suburban shopper two weeks in a row. Um and I'm assuming that this ad is the best argument that the no folks have because they've run the same ad twice. And it has five bullets. I'm sorry, I got a blurry background, but if you've received it, and I'll I'll read them for you quickly. I just feel like it's important to address each of these arguments because for all of the reasons to vote for, there must be good reasons to vote against. So I wanna start by saying that each of these bullets points out that there is no plan for something, some part, some element of the existing plan. Is lacking something. And I would sort of counter that. There is no other plan, so every time that there's, the point is made that there's no plan for something. That same is true for the no side. So let's take this whole thing with a grain of salt to start. The first bullet that has been brought up and that we hear about a lot is that there's no plan for traffic. Mr. Chair, I believe that everyone, most everyone engaged in this debate really does want what's best for Milton. But I believe that it's important to be honest with the citizens, and the idea that there's no plan for traffic is false. It's not true. Because this is a zoning plan. It is not a construction plan. Planning happens when, planning for traffic happens when a plan, a design plan is submitted. So we can zone a space for a hundred units and a developer could come in and say they're gonna put twenty-five, or they're gonna put fifty, or they're gonna put a hundred. And when they do that, they come forward with their traffic plan. So the idea that there's no plan for traffic is just not true. It's part of the process. And as this happens, the planning board will have oversight of the traffic plans that happen around the development. If there's no development proposed. Then there won't be any plans for traffic. So why would we spend the time, the towns' time and resources when we know that the whoever decides to develop the property. Is going to have to do that. So that's just not true. It's not true, and it's important to say that it's not true because. We're often told that this is a problem, and it's not. This planning for traffic is part of this process. The second point that they say is that there's no pan- plan to pay for the impact of an additional twenty-four hundred and sixty-one zone multifamily units. So this is, I really, I ha- hesitate to use the word, but I can't say it any other way. This is a lie twice over, okay? The reason that it's a lie the first time over is that they say an additional twenty-four hundred and sixty-one zone multifamily units. We know that this plan does not have that many additional units. It has, if it's fully built out, which it probably won't be for twenty-five, fifty years. But if it's fully built out, the maximum number of new units would be seventeen hundred and thirty. So they're using a false number, false number. I think that that's, I think that that's reprehensible. I think it's reprehensible to use a a number that they know is not true. Whoever they is, Milton Neighbors for Responsible Zone, they're using numbers that they know are not true to try to scare people. And we, I get accused of scare tactics tactics all the time when I'm just laying out the facts. And I'm laying out the facts here that this is not true. The second reason that it's not true is because it says there's no pa- plan to pay for. The planning board engaged a consulting group which looked at similar projects throughout Milton and in similar neighborhoods. And they have determined that if everything is built out, which we don't think that will be, but if when everything is built out. That this would actually result in a net gain of revenue. Okay, so there is a plan. The the plan pays for itself. The no plan has no plan to pay for our legal fees, our fines, the loss of revenue that we're gonna have from the state. So if you're talking about fiscal responsibility, that's important to know. The third point, and again, I hate to belabor this, but they've run this twice in suburban. Shopper, and I know how expensive that is. So they clearly believe these are their best arguments. The third point is that they say there's no equitable distribution of. That the law prohibits us from equitably distributing this exactly a hundred percent across the whole town. We are required by law to put fifty percent of the units within a half a mile of a transit stop. We are required by law to have a particular amount of density. We are required by law to make sure that each district, which can consist of subject districts. Is at least five liters in size. Everyone on this board, everyone on the planning board, and anyone who's paid attention to this process knows how many iterations that we went through. We looked at town, we looked at Fuller Village, we looked at Winter Valley, we looked at properties that made members of this board upset that we were looking at them. Just so that we could try to say that we have looked at every corner of Milton to try to make this as equitable as possible. So that there's no plan for equitable distribution of units is not true because it lea- A legally can't be true. And B, hundreds of thousands of dollars were put into the planning process to make sure that this was equitable as possible. We heard from communities, thirty-plus community forums, plus planning board and select board meetings. This is as equitable as it as it gets, okay? And by the way, again, there is no plan for equitable distribution on the other side as well. The fourth point, no plan for increased affordability. Again, this is a lie. It's a lie. The planning board is currently planning. For raising the bar from ten percent to fifteen percent for affordability. They're currently engaged in that with this plan. The planning board's doing it. The do the, maybe these folks don't know that that's happening, but if they do, shame on them. If they don't, then also why are they spending thousands of dollars on advertising? Something which they, which is not true. The fifth point is that there's no plan for reclassification. We have a historic trolley. It's not rapid transit. So again, this is, I will, I will use misdirection or mistruth for this because there is no way to be reclassified. We have written to the state twice with very strong language suggesting that we have been misclassified. Asking for explanation of our classification. We have been told it's not happening. The Attorney General's letter made it very clear that they consider. The state considers us to be an MBTA community. Chelsea is an MBTA community. Chelsea has one Silver Line bus stop. One Silver Line bus stop. Imagine if we had one Silver Line bus stop and we were being asked to do this. Imagine the hair pulling would have happened at that point. We have a real trolley in this town, and I moved to this town because of that trolley. I rode it every day as a commuter for years. It's a good trolley, and not only is it good, it's gonna get better because the state is investing a hundred and fourteen million in the redesign of it. They're investing twelve point two million dollars in the meantime to re- refurbish the PCC cars that are on there. I'm gonna miss the orange cars because I love them. I think they're beautiful. But when we have the nice green cars, the same cars that are rolling down the B, C, and D lines. Rolling through Milton, it's gonna be better for us. It's gonna be better for residents that have disabilities and make it easier for them to get on. So, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank your indulgence for going through this. I just feel it's important to point out. That the best five arguments that have been brought forward twice to as many Milton people as possible are either not true. Or they're deliberate mistruths. So the folks in Milton should know. I've been accused of fear mongering. I've been accused of overexaggeration. I know that I don't always come across as warm and fuzzy. I'm not a politician. I I apologize for that. But. I really think everybody wants what's best for Milton, but there's only one group that's telling you the truth about this. And there's another group that's telling you this, they're 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 making you believe something that's not true. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna end my comments. I'm not gonna respond to anybody because I appreciate how much time that I took up. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several points I think need to be raised here. One is, again, tell the truth. I think the truth is what is not being told here either. Even you yourself, um members all said. We sent two letters, strong letters for explanation of classification. Now, you tell me if explanation of classification is asking for reclassification. Two different asks. So when people say we asked, no, we didn't. And in fact. With that first letter, I know you had a lot of influence on that letter because you did a lot of the alterations of that letter. Um, so I I think we need to be truthful about that. Again, if we had done our due diligence. And had really asked for that and shown the reasons why, might have a different outcome. I think both sides do wanna get to a situation that is right for the town. Um. I'm troubled by the fact that I heard earlier that there was a forum um where people were turned away. I personally did not get an invitation to that forum uh that happened with Lieutenant Governor, and I do find that troubling. As far as traffic studies, I know you had mentioned that. There are things that can be done based on modeling. Uh they've used that a lot of times. If there are anticipating X number of units, they can look at what the traffic implication might be. We're one community. I feel like we're selling out the East Milton residents on this plan. This is a select board plan. It's not a planning board plan. We have an opportunity that we could have made it better. We could have added affordability in by doing a study, but we were in such a rush. To try to get something on the books instead of looking at the big picture. So I ask everybody, are we willing on a board to sell out one side of town? Fifty percent within half mile of transit and the other fifty percent elsewhere. I don't know if the exact numbers actually e- equal out to that. The point being, the whole purpose of this whole thing was transit-oriented development. Seems to me that a plan that put more near the transit was the plan that we should have gone with. But again, we were in such a rush. Boston again has seventeen percent affordable. We have ten percent. For people that believe that putting out um, you know, whatever number it ends up being. Whether it's twenty-four seventy-one, but you say it's not, so seventeen thirty, that means that we will need more affordable housing. Uh forty B actually, we need more forty B to keep up with that because we only have ten percent on rentals. I think we can do better. I think we have an obligation to the residents in this town to do better. We're one community. What we're doing is we are pitting people against pitting other, p- putting neighborhoods against neighborhood. We're pitting people against people. Um and. You, I I think that it's not equitable in terms of this. Putting more units on one section of town is a burden. It was just not even clo- close to getting to um amenities. It's more than half a mile. So again, I think that we could have done better. Um, you know, I think we have an obligation to the residents, and I think that. We have an obligation to listen to whatever the vote may be, whether it's for or against, and stop selling out one side against another. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Well, no one was in a rush. This was done over, over a year, year and a half. Wasn't just a select board plan, had the input from the planning department, planning board, the consultants. No one's selling anyone out. This board certainly since last September has asked and sought. Whether there's a better plan, whether there's something different to do. It's been nothing presented in terms of anything better. We're always open to that. Everyone's always open to that. Everyone's always. Would be accepting of a better plan. Just hasn't been presented um since September when we first proposed this one. So this, you know, twenty-eight-page proposed zoning meets the primary goal that Milton residents. People we represent have sought in planning for many years. And that is to preserve the physical character of the neighborhoods. Now, how does it do that? Well, for one example. This twenty-eight-page zoning protects East Milton Square from overdevelopment. By requiring lower height, lower building height, more open space, and bigger setbacks. It is a disincentive for developers in East Milton Square, and the goal. Is to maintain the status quo until the East Milton residents decide on what they want for overlay zone. And that's all found at page twenty-three in this twenty-eight-page document. As another example, the non-residential properties zoned and granted at what's been referred to as five hundred units or eleven hundred units. They allow us to get credit for those units in non-residential areas right next to the highway. So we don't have to zone for them right in the middle of our neighborhoods. Now specifically, that state-owned DPW lot on Granite Ave. It's across the four-lane state road from Portland Circle and Fissalab. It's got three existing buildings, storage tanks, trucks. It's got a um two-hundred-spot park-and-ride parking area. Where there are two hundred cars every day. It is not subject to the town's zoning. State could have done something different with it over the last several decades, regardless of resident, but it hasn't. The state would have to decide to move all its operations, to move those buildings. And to move the two-hundred-car park-and-ride lot somewhere if they were gonna do something different with that property. But if we include it in our zoning, we get to count those three hundred and sixty-eight units without zoning for them. Right in the middle of a neighborhood in Milton, and we protect against the potential for bigger buildings. Being right next door to existing houses in our neighborhoods. And if the state did decide to move all its operations, to move that two-hundred lot park, a two-hundred-car park and uh. Park-and-ride lot somewhere and tried to sell it to a developer, it would have to fix that four-lane road. It would have to put in stoplights, which is what the Portland Circle and Fissalab neighborhoods want. And a developer would also have to somehow fix the water uh issues. It's the same with two granted. Up the road, half a mile past the highway, um right next to the Dorchester border. Uh, it's a relatively new commercial building. It's got an anchor tenant in it, catches law. And um that tenant is an anchor tenant, and look, that that's not gonna change anytime soon. We zone for one hundred and seventy-one units in that commercial building that's a half a mile away from any neighborhood in Milton. And we get to count those one hundred and seventy-one units towards our minimum. And uh without zoning for them right in the middle of a neighborhood, and that helps to preserve the physical character of our neighborhoods. As we also know the zoning because we've all read it, we've all, you know, and now hopefully the voters will all read it. There are four pages of development standards, pages twenty-seven to thirty-one, and there are another two pages of site plan design and review requirements. At pages thirty-three to thirty-five, they all benefit our neighborhoods, and that would all be lost if we vote no. Now, you know, we've seen this movie before. Um, five years ago. There was an organized effort to say no to the Falcone Development in East Milton. Organized effort to say no. It's the same arguments were made, the traffic, and we don't need to worry about forty B, the law. And we'll beat them in court. And that was a fifty-unit project. With commercial development and parking, and the no's won. The no's defeated that project. And the result of the no's winning and defeating the Falcone project. Is that that fifty-unit project is now a ninety-two-unit project with no commercial and no parking. A fifty-unit project on Adam Street. We s- the, we said no to that because we thought we could beat the law or go to court. And um it became a ninety-two-unit project, and I fear that that's what gonna, that's what will happen if we say no again. I fear that it will be bad for our town, and I fear that it will particularly be bad for East Milton. The truth is that this zoning is no housing advocate's dream, and it's not the choice of residents who don't wanna comply with the law right now. It's right in the middle. It preserves the. It preserves the character of our neighborhoods with the minimal compliance with the law. That's what the residents have said they wanted, and that's what was delivered. And that's why the town meeting members, who reviewed this and debated it for seven hours, ended up approving it by two-thirds. So again, the consequences of the no vote, if we vote no on February thirteenth, we'll be in violation of the law. We'll face lawsuits from the Attorney General and others. Our zoning will be controlled by a judge or a special master who won't be interested in preserving the character of our neighborhoods. Funding will go down, costs will go up, and it's the Milton taxpayer who will be hurt by all of this. And, you know, we, we now know from what's been calculated that there are basically three buckets of funding that will go down. If we say no on February thirteenth, there are the specific grant programs in the long guidance, Mass Works, which we got a million dollars from for infrastructure in two thousand and twelve. Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grants, which we got a hundred thousand dollars, over a hundred thousand dollars in the last five years from then. We got eighty thousand dollars in community planning grants in two thousand and twenty-three. We got sixty thousand dollars for a local rapid recovery plan for East Milton in two thousand and twenty-one. And we got forty thousand dollars for East Milton mixed-use overlay zoning in two thousand and twenty-two. We also know that the second bucket is those competitive discretionary grants that are controlled by the government. We benefited from these grants over the last three years to the two hundred, one point seven million dollars in the area of schools and DPW and health and IT and planning. And we know that these are all at risk. We know that because last week, we were granted a hundred and forty thousand dollars to finally fix our seawall and our dock down at the landing. And that is subject to compliance with the MBT Communities. And if we vote no on February thirteenth, we don't get it. If we vote yes, we do. Finally, we know now that we'd been told by the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization, which judges the transportation improvement program projects from which we have benefited to a large degree, several millions, several million, million dollars over the last few years, that we will be penalized if we are not in compliance with the MBT Communities Act. We have future projects, such as nineteen point four million dollars for reconstruction on one thirty-eight from Dollar to Royal to Dollar Lane, four point eight million dollars for the intersection of one thirty-eight and Bradley. And we're going to be penalized five points in that competition for those grants going forward. And those grants, just so everyone knows, as we've been told by the planning department, those are usually decided by a point and a point and a half. So five points is certainly, certainly makes, will make getting those, that funding for our roads difficult going forward. So these are real consequences. They'll cause real damage to our town and to our residents. I think as town leaders, we have a responsibility to be responsible. I think we have a responsibility to act in the best interests of the residents. A no vote says no to Milton residents who want to preserve the physical character of our neighborhoods, and I can't do that in good conscience. A no vote says no to Milton taxpayers. And I can't do that in good conscience. A yes vote is a responsible vote. A yes vote is a vote for Milton residents and particularly for Milton taxpayers. And so that's how I, how I hope, that's what I hope we'll support as a board for the referendum. Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Few things to say here with regards to the plan in the letter that we got from the AG. So the Attorney General also said that she would work with us to comply. I think that's important. I think that we certainly could try to work with the AG's office on compliance. I think that we can do better. We can do better for all of the residents in this community. When RKG did their analysis, their fiscal analysis, my understanding is that they did not talk to any of the department heads. And I think that's important because there are consequences of putting in development for all of these areas, whether it be our roads, our sewer system, public health, police, fire. We really don't know what the costs of that are. And I think the other part I would say is that we have an opportunity here to, you know, even work on our own plan to get it better. I think that the planning board has the opportunity to do something better. We were stuck with a deadline that was an arbitrary deadline in December twenty, twenty twenty-three for the, for the communities that are considered rapid transit. And that put a lot of pressure on the town to get something in. It's not a great plan. I said it all along. Is a trolley stop a subway station? We could have asked about that. We could have pursued that. We chose not to. Our letters could have asked for reclassification. Again, we didn't. Perhaps the best route would have been to have gone right to the, you know, either Mara Healy or the Attorney General with that argument and met with them even and see what could have been done. I think we have an obligation, as you said, Mr. Zullis, to the residents, and we certainly do. We have an obligation to the town and to everybody in the town, all areas of the town. And I think that's, that's let the chips fall where they may, and let's let the residents vote on these proposals and let them research both sides. And I find it troubling that we are not being open-minded to that process. Thank you.
Well, I, I would just say, Ms. Musto, if, if you have a suggestion or anyone has a suggestion to improve this plan, we'll put it on the agenda. If someone from the planning board has a suggestion to, we, we'll put it on the agenda. It's been since September, and no one has made any suggestion about an improvement to it. Now, that doesn't mean, we're certainly, I, I, I think we as a board, we've been saying since September, give us something better, give us an alternative. So I think if we want to put something on the agenda for our next meeting, if you have a suggestion for an alternative, we'll certainly put it on the agenda. And I, I, I will point out, we, we did make the, the argument to the MBT that the trolley was not part of the red line. It was not a subway station on the red line. We put together, I put together, about a seventy-five-page packet supporting that back in September. And that was not something that was, that was agreed with by, by the MBT or the HLC. Mr. Zull.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I promised not to speak so long, so I'm going to try to keep this really short. I just want to say, I think Ms. Musto's use of the word "let the chips fall where they may" is entirely appropriate because this is gambling. We are gambling with the financial future of this town. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of potential fines, legal fees, lost revenue. When you take that gamble, it's not just a, it's not just a roll of the dice of your own resources. Lost revenue means maybe we can't hire another teacher next year, or we have to lay off teachers. Or we can't, we can't afford to hire the same number of firefighters or police. We can't do road improvements. Okay, I'm not willing to take that gamble. Just a couple of other points. The only way that we can continue to work on this is if we vote yes. If we vote no, Town Council has advised. Unless we come up with something that is both somehow adhering to the same guidelines and also radically different from what we've already done, that we're not going to be able to put it forward. And the Attorney General has not said that she's going to work with, with us if we vote no. This is not true. The letter says very specifically that we have, are an MBT community. We have an obligation to, to respond. And I know it's very popular to poo-poo when consultants tell us something or lawyers tell us something because in my gut, I don't think this is a hundred percent accurate. But guess what? Consultants know what they're talking about, and so do lawyers. And lawyers have told us that the Attorney General, her letter is an indication that the town will be sued if we vote no. Now, we can gamble with that, sure, let's gamble. But let's be clear about what the stakes are. The stakes are that we may have to lay teachers off. The stakes are that we will have worse roads, not better roads, if we vote no, because we'll lose access to state funding. And the best part of that whole gamble is that you know what the end result is going to be. We're going to still end up having to comply with state law. So we're going to gamble away teachers, firefighters, police, and roads on a one-in-a-million chance that somehow every lawyer that's looked at this and the state Attorney General and the governor have all somehow going to change their mind because, well, they've said that they're going to work with us? I mean, I like to play a little bit of poker. This is, that's a trash hand. That's a two-seven. You throw that away. You do not let the chips fall where they may on that. And it's important to be honest to the residents. This is not fear mongering. These are consequences. And it's important for them to know that it's their tax dollars at risk. It's their kids at risk. It's their seniors at risk. It's their roads at risk if you gamble and vote no. And the last thing I want to say is anytime we set a deadline, it doesn't make it an arbitrary deadline. The nature of government requires you to set deadlines. We know what happens when you don't set deadlines. You get what has happened in Milton for a hundred years, which is that we haven't changed our zoning for a hundred years. Now we're finally coming up with a deadline. Think of it as a hundred-year deadline. We've had a hundred years to try to gradually evolve to, like Boston has, to be a town that's adjacent to the most dynamic city in the world, and we haven't done it. So is it an arbitrary deadline? No, it's a state-imposed deadline, and it was imposed not just on us, but on every MBT community, including Chelsea, which has one Silverline bus stop. One Silverline bus stop. They are an MBT community. They're compliant. We are not. So let's just be honest. When we use gambling rhetoric, it's correct. It's correct. But the odds are long, the stakes are very high, and we've got a lot of people telling us not to go into that casino. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you about the gambling, you know, thing that you're talking about. Chips where the, chips fall where they may is, is allowing people to go out and vote. And let's get it straight. Let's be honest with people here. We left two point five million on the table when we were going to do an animal shelter, and that had no, that wasn't based on any government funding. Okay, so as far as what's going on with the, with the roads and the schools, Mr. Milano said at our last meeting that that funding is not touched and that will be coming forward for our town. So I don't think we should say that. That's not true. We have an opportunity to do the right thing. And, you know, again, I think that the planning board could be working on their own argument, their own, you know, article, I should say. The thing is, is that you're right. Mr. Mello had said that the two years, if we came back with the same article, but if it was different, and he did say that it would have to be on a tight line, but if there was a different article, slightly different, that he, you know, you'd have to work it. And I think that my question that was to Mr. Mello is if it came into compliance at that point with better, you know, affordability, with relooking at the districts and so forth, and, and just a totally different article, and it complied, would we be eligible for all of those grant fundings again? So I think that, you know, again, let's please let the residents decide, let the residents decide on this one. And let's stop making them afraid that if they vote one way or another, they're going to lose out on certain things. You have to be honest with people. Let them make the decision. And that's not called letting the chips fall where they may. That's called democracy.
Just to, thank you, Ms. Musto. Just a slight clarification. Town Council didn't say it would have to be slightly different. The, the language in the case laws, it would have to be substantially different in order to be, in order to come back in two years. Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to everybody for their thoughtful comments. I am going to take, hopefully not as long because I think for me, this is a really simple thing that boils down to one point, which I'll make at the end. I purposely chose to move to Milton. It reminded me of the town that I grew up in. I grew up in a small farming town in western Massachusetts, which, don't laugh, was a suburb of the biggest city out there, Springfield. I know everybody's going to chuckle now because Springfield's not that big of a city. But I grew up in a, literally a farming town. I lived off of Meadow Street. And I loved it. I loved growing up there. I loved everything about the town. Milton reminds me a lot of that town with all of its flaws. It actually reminds me a lot of the town I grew up in. And I moved out after my mom passed away. I left Agua when I was twenty years old. I am still in touch with many of my friends back home who have bought their family home, who continue to raise families there. And I am shocked when I go back there. It's not the same town I grew up in. In fact, now it's a city. And it's thriving, and it's bustling, and it's diverse. Oh, my God, is it diverse, and it's so beautiful. You know, I graduated high school with three people of color. And now I think their, their stats are up to almost twenty percent people of color that live in the town. It's amazing. They've made affordable housing. They've done it in community. They've grown. There's been growing pains, lots of growing pains there. But they've decided to change with the, the times, with the way our communities are going, with what suburbs have to be now for those big cities that we live by. I love Milton. I would not have picked anywhere else to live. When I moved back to Massachusetts, we lived in Quincy, and we looked around, and I looked at Hangon, and I, I looked at Waymouth, and I found Milton, and I fell in love. As I think many of us have that weren't born and raised here. I think we fell in love with the town. We fell in love with the, the people in our town. And, and that, that hasn't changed for me with this zoning. There's a lot of words being thrown around. There's a lot of accusations. There's a lot of different opinions, and that is a beautiful thing because I'm happy that I live in a town where all opinions and all thoughts do matter. We may not agree, but they do matter. But for me, if I was to sit and wait for something to be perfect before I ever started to do anything, I would still be living in my parents' basement, waiting for the perfect person to come along and sweep me off my feet, waiting for the perfect time to have children, waiting for the perfect time to buy my perfect house, waiting for the right college to come along. For those of you that know me, I'm a pretty liberal woman. I went to a Southern Baptist college, like, let's just put this in perspective. I did not wait for the perfect thing to come along ever. And I'm not going to wait here. And the main reason why I'm not going to wait here, and the last thing I will say, is that it's the law. A lot of us don't like the laws. A lot of us try and change laws. I do. I wrote laws for many years. I wrote policy that thankfully became law that now people have to follow, and I kind of like that because I think I wrote it better. But when I was doing that, when I was writing laws, I listened to people. People came to me with opinions. People came to me with suggestions. And you know what? Those suggestions that fit in. I, like my fellow colleagues on this, have not heard any suggestions from anybody. Not one person that's telling me no has come to me and said, Erin, I really think we should take out these two streets in East Milton and put these two streets in the Columbines in. And the reason why they haven't done that is because it is such a fine delicate dance of how to make this zoning work. It is something that our, people that are paid hundreds of thousands of dollars have done for months and months and months with our town. I can't tell you how many times Tim came to the planning board with new, new ideas, new ways to accomplish this because we went back and we did this, we thought, because we had to try everything. It's not perfect. I don't know one thing on this planet that is perfect. Nothing. My street's not perfect. My eighties kitchen's not perfect. I love my kids, but they're not perfect. Nothing is perfect in this world. But we try our best and we do what's right. And at the end of the day, we follow the law. This is a law. It's not, well, if they had read it differently, they wouldn't have voted for it. A hundred and eighty, whatever, three politicians in our state voted for this. Four didn't. That's a massive spread. Sixty-six percent of our voters here in town voted to comply with the law. That's a massive spread. This is not something that is just, let's wait and see. It's not. This is, we have a law. And I personally did not run for the select board to be named in a lawsuit. This is, we have a law. And I personally did not run for the select board to be named in a lawsuit as a defendant. That goes against everything I stand for in this country. I'm an almost 50-year-old woman going to law school because I believe in democracy, because I believe in making a difference, because I believe in the law. There is absolutely no way that this town is a unicorn. God, I know I tell my kids I'm a unicorn all the time, and I'm the most perfect thing. But we are not a unicorn. We have to follow the law. And so everybody can say what they want. Everybody can have their opinions about the letters and the money and the lies or the fear mongering, or let the people speak. Well, at the end of the day, it's a law. And I honestly cannot even believe that we're at this point. I don't know. We've been talking about this. This is like the 17th million meeting I've been at where we're talking about this. And it's the law. Take all those words, put them over on one side, put them on the other side, put them on the suburban shopper, put them in the Milton Times, but nobody is coming down to the fact that this is a law, and we are citizens of this country, and this country is based on law. Period. I'm not getting into the fray with the rest of this, because I'm not going to be defended in lawsuit. I can't even imagine that that would be a possibility. It's the law. You may not like it, but you gotta follow it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bradley, Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over 3,000 people signed a petition to bring this to a vote, a town-wide vote. I think that's significant. That's a big segment of the population that thought it was important enough that they should have the opportunity to exercise their free will and have a vote. I think that's important to say. You know, we're seeing other things that are happening in the news. I mean, if you've looked at the news, you've seen that the Newton teachers are on strike, and they're not following the law because they believe in what they believe in, and they're taking the financial consequences of that. So people need to do what's right. They need to do what's right for the community. People that are the voters, they need to go out there and be able to have the right to vote, whether they vote for or against this. That's their right. And I don't want to take away a right from somebody that's a taxpayer in this community. I think that we represent, as you know, Ms. Bradley knows, I always say, we represent everybody in the community. And we could have done a better plan. And I know at one point, even at one of the pre-meetings before town meeting, Mr. Zulus, you were talking about even going up 10 stories on one of the buildings, and then that never came to fruition at our meeting. So I think even in the last minutes, we were, you know, scrambling to do something. We have a planning board. This is what they work on is zoning. I think from what I'm hearing, they're committed to working on a plan. I think we can do better for all of the residents in this town instead of trying to get something out that isn't right for the community. But again, I think the most important thing is people came forward and want to bring it to a vote. I think let it, let people vote. Thank you.
And I think, thank you, Ms. Musto. I don't think anyone is suggesting that the people shouldn't vote, or won't vote, or exercising free will. I think the question is what this board's position is going to be. And then just to clarify, you know, no one, when I met with the neighbors over in Portland Circle last, I guess, last October, nobody was scrambling. No one was, what we were trying to do is see if there were better options. And I committed to them to ask the planning department and the consultants if they could come up with better options, including whether we could put more in two granite and less in the other ones. And there was, there was an additional option that came up, but nobody seemed interested in it. But, but we're trying. You know, that's what we do. We try. And it seems to me we'll continue to try, but there just isn't anything else. No one has suggested anything else. So so sure, I mean, we can continue to try, but there, but, you know, it's been certainly been, you know, it's been more than 18, 18 months of effort. And certainly, this plan has been out there since, since the beginning of September. And, you know, if, again, we can put it on our agenda. If there's something else, it just, no one has suggested anything. But I think this board since September has always said that we welcome anything else, but it just hasn't, hasn't come. Mr. Zol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the interest of time and in the absence of any additional plan, and I will, I would just add that the planning board is actually still working on our plan to raise the affordability requirements from 10 to 15%, which I appreciate. I would like to make a motion, a conditional motion, and you can work on my language here, so that if we can meet again for Mr. Wells, that the select board will recommend a yes vote for the February 13th, 2024 ballot question on Article 1 from the December 4th, 2024 special town meetings for zoning bylaw and math amendment for compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, both subject to not being able to meet again before February 13th.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded. Just to clarify, on the, on the 10% affordability, under the law, there's a requirement that there be an economic analysis be completed in order to increase the affordability from above 10%. Planning board has it in their docket to commission that economic analysis. Hasn't happened yet. We're hoping it will happen. And we're hoping it will happen soon. So anyway, I know there's been discussion of it. But again, that's the planning board's doing it. I wouldn't suggest that this board step in, because it's really the planning board's, planning board's effort. Hopefully, they'll do it. I suppose this board could. If, if it doesn't materialize, because I know there's a great interest in increasing the percentage from 10% to as much as we can. But that economic analysis that again sits with the planning board right now, that's a precondition to being able to increase the percentage. With respect to the motion that's been made and seconded, it was a motion to recommend a yes vote on the February 13 ballot. And again, I, I think, I think it was fair, but I think, Mr. Zol, I would, I would suggest, subject to reconsideration, reconsideration at a subsequent meeting prior to February 13th, if one should occur.
I'll accept that friendly amendment.
I concur.
All right. Any further discussion on this? All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
No.
Mr. Zol?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulus, yes. Item five, discussion approval, letter regarding DCR's potential closure of Chickatobit Road and the proposed project at Randolph Avenue, Chickatobit Road. Mr. Milano.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I provided for review a letter drafted that would be sent to EEA, which administers the environmental review process. We previously submitted a comment as part of the environmental review process for Chickatobit Lake project. As we discussed at our prior meeting, DCR also submitted a comment letter which stated that they are assessing the feasibility of permanently closing Chickatobit Road to vehicular traffic for the long-term benefit of the Blue Hills Reservation. They asked that the proposal to close Chickatobit Road be considered as an alternative of the design of the intersection improvement projects, and that they asked that there's a project team can establish, establish at MassDOT to consider this and work it in over the next, over the forthcoming design process, this potential option. I drafted a letter for the board to, I could send to EEA, as I mentioned, two copies to MassDOT and DCR, asking to just confirm what portions of Chickatobit Road they're speaking about. We are, or I'm assuming they mean the portion heading where there is a gate heading towards Wind's New Braintree, but their letter did not specify exactly what they were talking about. The letter notes that, you know, there certainly may be design improvements for having one leg of the intersection, no one will need it, but they request additional information about it, request that alternatives are thoroughly studied, and that the town wants to better understand how the proposal may impact traffic volume, safety, and congestion. If this project team is established, the letter asks that the town be part of that team. And then there's just a closing note that we do have a water tower, this portion of the road, that we will need to maintain access to. That's what I drafted. Happy to hear any edits or any questions about the letter as it stands.
Comments or questions? Mr. Zol and then Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nick, just on the, on that water tower, is there a way to get there if that road is closed there from Milton?
Uh, no, not presently, but it's next to an education center as well, so I assume some kind of, it'll probably be closed to general public, but again, this is the information. I don't have to answer that, as if the gate were closed, the town technically would not have access.
Yeah, I guess, you know, just drawing from what Mr. Wells said at our last meeting, you know, I'm concerned if it's, the plan is just to close a gate, that's not going to show up on people's Google Maps, and almost certainly would result in more traffic accidents, not fewer. So I'm appreciative of this. I'm supportive of this letter. I was just curious about the, the location of the water tower. Thank you.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the letter is very good. I do have a question about the last paragraph on the first page. While reducing the turns at this location may make redesigning that, that sentence there. It almost feels like we're giving them that this will make it, I mean, that's will make it easier and reduce potential left-hand turns. I'm almost wondering if we should have something in there, because, you know, right now, they don't have to do anything except for just designate the left-hand turn signalization. So if we're sort of, it's almost making it look like we're giving him that, that redesigning it, you know, will reduce potential left-hand turns. And I thought that the whole thing was that we want to make them just safer. So their own study back in 2018 from the engineer showed that that there was an alternative that was better. So I don't know if that, rephrasing that at all would be better. That's the only question I have on that line. Thank you.
Roxanne, Ms. Musto, I had exactly the same thought and concern. And what I was going to suggest along those lines for that sentence is starting the sentence with, where we begin on the second line, the town requests, and then say the town requests that EEA ensure that any alternatives, and then take down any alternatives for redesigning the intersection or reducing left-hand turns be thoroughly studied, et cetera, et cetera. So that was my thought, because I, I, I agree with you. I've had the same, exact same point that you did. And I thought maybe if we say, well, any alternatives for redesigning or reducing left-hand turns, we want to make sure they're thoroughly studied. So that was, that was my, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that line, it just, it's almost like you're giving them that otherwise. And I think that's important to, to put in there. So I do like that. Thank you.
You think that works? Do you think that works the way I suggested it?
I think it does. I mean, you know, obviously, see what the rest of the board thinks, but I think that's the, you know, important to do. And then if we do agree with this, can you send out like the updated copy, Nick, once it's corrected and we agree upon it?
Sure.
So I think it's, I'm sorry, I think it's redesigning the, redesigning the intersection. See, it says alternative to redesigning the intersection. Yeah.
So we'd strike that first whole half?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's, that was, I don't know, Roxanne, that's the part I was like, I had the same thought, but we're kind of giving them that, so.
Right. I think, I mean, I think that looks good. Obviously, see what everybody else thinks.
Yeah. We got a, we got a thumbs up from Mr. Zol, so. All right. Any, anything further on that? Do we want to, do we want to have a motion on that?
I'll move to approve the letter regarding DCR's potential closure of Chickatobit Road and the proposed project at Randolph Avenue and Chickatobit Road as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Zol?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulus, yes. Item six is discussion approval of a payment for or financial support for the community forum, which we initiated back in October, when we asked the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association to put together a forum for our residents to talk to one another about everything that was going on, is going on in the Middle East and elsewhere. And the forum has come together. It is scheduled for Sunday, February 4th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Pierce Middle School. And what Milton Interfaith Clergy Association has asked us is if we could sponsor a payment for the services of two facilitators. They have identified two facilitators. And so they were, they were, they were, are asking us to support the forum with $1,000 to pay for the services of the facilitators at the forum. Mr. Zol?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm delighted that this forum is happening. As everyone knows or should know, that the problems of antisemitism, as well as Islamophobia, have not disappeared. If anything, they've increased, although since the terrible tragic terrorist events of October 7th. And I think it's our duty as a select board to support it. My, I'm personally going to be missing the Milton High School performance of six in order to make it on time for this. And I would encourage anybody who can go to the Milton High School Theater this weekend. There's going to be some great stuff on. But this is a critically important event, and I'm planning on, I'm planning on being there, and I, I wholeheartedly believe that we should be supporting it. I'd like to, if Roxanne would like to make the motion, I'd like to give her that affirmative. Or, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I'm just, well, a couple of things. I think it's great that we're having, that the Interfaith Clergy is hosting this forum at Pierce, and I think it's good that we're letting people know about it and when it's going to be. And obviously, it's an important topic. I just have a couple of questions. Nick, have we done this before where, you know, religious organizations are the hosts of this forum? Have we been, have we done that before, where we've monetarily supported organizations like that?
I, I think this is the town, the town that's participating in it has been actively involved in helping coordinate between police department and schools. So it's not a, the town supporting a religious organization. So I think that's the clarity, or the difference, rather, in terms of how this is going to go.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think the, the payments would be directly to the facilitators. Not, not, Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, I think, helped find the facilitators, but the payments would be directly to each of the two facilitators, not, not to the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association. But I think it's a good point, Roxanne. It's very good.
I guess my follow-up would be, I understand that now that you've explained it. I just wonder if we're setting a precedent going forward, because, you know, certainly, if we all individually want to give money towards facilitators, I get that. But with the town using resources on this, you know, there was, I know there was something that happened not too long ago. I think it was an organization that had something about Ukrainian in a crisis. I don't recall that we helped sponsor or anything. And I don't believe that we're listed even as the sponsors of this. It's, it's coming through the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association. So I think it's, it almost looks like it's an intermeddling of state and church, and I get a little nervous about that and setting a precedent with this and going forward. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I think it's a good point. You know, I think we asked, our board asked Micah to, to put this together. And now they have come back and said, in the context of putting this together, they have two facilitators that, that need to get they have two facilitators that, uh, that need to get paid and they have asked the town to see if the town would want to pay for those facilitators for this forum. So, uh, so I think it's, uh, I think there's enough of a distinction there, but, um, it may be something that we could check with town council. Problem is, the forum is Sunday, um, in terms of getting the approval for Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I might have missed this, but did you, did somebody mention how much this, the ask is for?
It's, it's each of the facilitators is, um, uh, it would be paid five hundred dollars.
And is the, is the check being, who's the check being written to? The individual person or the consultant?
Yes, it would go to each of the facilitators for the services provided.
And they have their own company, so it wouldn't go to the Interfaith Clergy. And what I, what I'm trying to get at is when you write a check, you make it out to somebody. We're making it out to.
Yes.
Okay.
This, this would go to the two, this would go to the, we get an invoice. Well, first we get an invoice.
Right.
Right? So we, we don't pay anything without an invoice. So we get an invoice from the facilitator for the services provided. And then, uh, and then if it's approved, we would pay the invoice.
So, um, given that and given the, um, I'm pausing because I want to make sure that I am picking the right words. And I, I, I just, I guess I should say the, um, um, deeply emotional, um, outpouring we saw with what happened in town. Um, I think that it's our responsibility to try and heal some of those wounds. Um, and I think by bringing in a facilitator, um, to work with the town to discuss these, these, um, these issues, um, is a positive thing. I, I hope that everybody that sent emails that stopped me on the street, that, um, yelled at me in front of the house, um, will come to this meeting and, um, and we can start to work together and start to heal some of the wounds and hear each other. They're all sides. Um, so I personally would, um, support this. I, I don't have a motion in front of me, but I'm going to guess that some of the members with their hands up probably does. So, um, I'm going to stop talking.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Zoll and then Ms. Musto.
Uh, I was going to make a motion, but if Ms. Musto has a separate point, I'd like to let her go first.
Um, sure. Thank you. Um, I do want to say that I am supportive of this. I just want to make sure that we, you know, just have some clarity on it, only because I understand there are two separate people that are separately getting paid that are facilitators. But going forward, if another situation arises, how will we handle that? And, you know, I just, like I said, it, this is, uh, if we really haven't done something like this before, we just want to make sure that we're, um, consistent, you know, so that's all.
It's, it's a very good point. It's a very good point. Uh, you know, precedent in this, these kinds of things, uh, is very important. So it's a very good point. Um, you know, I, 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 I guess, um, it's a good point. I, I, it's a good point, Mr. Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's, uh, no further, uh, discussion on this, I would like to move to authorize a thousand dollars to support the community forum. How do we dwell together in peace? Scheduled for Sunday, February fourth, twenty twenty four, from three P M to five P M at the Pierce Middle School.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item seven is discussion update approval of the Milton, Milton Landing Lot B proposals from Dexter Southfield and Milton Yacht Club. Is this something we, we, we can wait for Mr. Wells on? Is it possible?
It's just a quick update.
Okay. Oh, so it's an update. Mr. Mr. Uh, Mr. Milano?
Sure. Uh, so since, um, since the board has discussed moving forward negotiations with Dexter Southfield, I have been in touch with Dexter um, to discuss their proposal for Lot B. Um, and I just wanted to, to present for that they really want to be, uh, good to go for this voting season, which begins, uh, middle to end of March for their rowing, uh, team. Um, and we know we have an obligation to the yacht club to keep, um, to provide them storage through June. And the board has indicated, you know, wanting to reach a resolution for all three parties. So we've talked about a way to have a, um, have Dexter utilize Lot A, which is, um, mostly vacant now for, um, the beginning of rowing season once. And then as we work towards a full resolution for, with each of the parties down there, um, we'll have everybody spread away for long-term boat storage. Um, so that's, that's the update on Dexter. Um, they're very eager. They're, they're planning to install a low-profile dock for public use. Um, I have met with an apostle rowing club who currently occupy Lot C, uh, to discuss with them, give them an update, keep them updated. I've reached out to the yacht club a few times, haven't been able to coordinate them with a meeting, um, but that's just the last piece here to get spread away. So that's, that's my update at this time. Uh, nothing permanent, but I mean, nothing to act on, um, but we're trying to pull together all three, uh, all three groups down there for a solution that works everybody, uh, for the next five years.
Comments or questions? Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to say that we should put this off until, um, member Wells can be with us since he is the chair of the Milton Landing. So I just want to make sure that we're not going further on this topic until he's available to be with us.
Okay. All right. Anything, uh, anything else on, uh, item seven? So we'll, we'll, uh, discuss this more in, um, at the next meeting with Mr. Wells. Uh, item eight is discussion update on the F Y twenty twenty five budget. Is, is there an update? It's Mr. Milano, Ms. Bradley, please?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. We are continuing to meet with our, um, town parks on the school committee. Um, we are continuing to have great conversations with them about the state of affairs for our town. Um, and Mr. Milano is going to provide a brief update with the, I think he's going to show us the governor's numbers that came in. Um, is that correct, Mr. Milano?
I certainly can.
You don't, the, i- if people want to go and watch our meeting, they can watch it and see all the numbers. But so far, we only have the governor's numbers. Um, we're waiting to see how that shakes out. Um, of course, we won't get the House numbers until, gosh, is it March? And then the Senate numbers in May. So, um, so obviously, we're, we're playing with just the governor's numbers, but it doesn't look as good as it has in years past, is what I can say right now, right? Mr. Milano, please use better words than I can.
Uh, yeah, I'll just, to, for a, a little bit, um, for particular information, the, the state aid numbers from the, uh, governor's budget were released, uh, two weeks ago, or last week rather. Um, and state aid in Milton, which has been, uh, strong over the past couple of years, our net aid, so our state aid minus what they charge us for various items, um, results in a net aid number in fiscal twenty five, uh, per, per proposal that will decrease. Um, so rather than expecting state aid to increase, which is typical, we're actually going to get less money in fiscal twenty five, um, than we did in fiscal twenty four. Um, one of the, the main factor of that is that's town is only receiving thirty dollars per student, um, in fiscal twenty five per, per proposal. Whereas in the past few years, we've received more than that due to changes around the chapter seventy student aid formula that had been implemented. Um, so it caught us, um, I will admit, a little bit off guard, a little bit by surprise to see, um, state aid drop so dramatically year over year. Um, so it's not good news for us. Um, in terms of where the budget stands presently, um, in, with our requested level service budget, um, compared to where we anticipate revenues, we're looking at a gap of about three point nine million dollars presently. Uh, we do have another meeting of the finance committees scheduled for, um, February fifteenth. Uh, the capital improvement planning committee met this morning. They are also planning to meet that same week, um, to finalize the capital budget. So we're making, uh, progress slowly but surely, hopefully present a balanced budget, um, at that meeting on the fifteenth. Uh, and just the last thing I'll note is that we do have a number of needs to this budget request that, um, exceed folks', uh, level service requests. So, um, to fund any new or increased services would require more, uh, funding than we have even, um, where we're already faced with, um, trying to close a, a gap of about three point nine million dollars. So that's what things stand. We'll certainly have a, a fuller update on our next meeting on February twenty seventh after the meetings of the capital committee and the joint finance committees, um, in two weeks.
Mr. Milano, any comments or questions from members? Item nine, discussion approval of meeting minutes. Are you ready to move forward on December fourth, December eleventh and December nineteenth?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December fourth, twenty twenty three, December eleventh, twenty twenty three, and December nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item ten, public comment response. Any public comment response? Seeing none. Uh, item eleven, future meeting dates. We have the twenty seventh of February and the twelfth of March, uh, but, uh, I think we're going to try to see if we can do something next week.
Yeah, it looks like just, it looks like availability is best. And Monday's probably too late by now, but end of the week, Thursday, later in the day, um, like five o'clock or later, or Friday during the day, um, I actually will need to speak, uh, or get confirmation from each of you. Um, but based on some initial feedback, that's looking like the best timing. Uh, but I'll reach out, uh, separately after the meeting.
Okay. Um, anything, anything, anything further on that? Uh, item twelve, future agenda items. Um, uh, we have anything on that to, obviously, send an email as you do, or uh, on that. Uh, item thirteen, discussion approval memorandum of agreement with the Milton Professional Management Association for fiscal years twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, um, reached an agreement with, uh, this association, um, a week ago, the union ratified the agreement. Um, it's a three-year contract, uh, in accordance with our other ones. Um, the cost of living adjustment is two percent, two percent, two percent. And years two and three, there's an additional half percent increase, uh, year two and step six and year three and step eight. Um, in addition to that, we adjusted their sick leave accruals. Uh, we've also agreed to an increase on, um, professional development. Uh, there's, there's money set aside for professional development for folks in this association. We agreed to increase that, um, for folks to be able to take advantage of programs, uh, and possibly they might want to take it. Um, that's the general outline of the agreement. I don't take any further questions that are.
Comments or questions? Um, uh, appreciate the, um, the, uh, collaboration, you know, between your office, Mr. Milano, and the Professional Management Association. Um, do we have a motion to approve that agreement?
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement.
I'll second.
By the Milton Professional Management Association for fiscal years twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five, twenty five.
And now I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item fourteen.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Thank you all. Uh, have a great rest of the day. Don't make it a good day, make it a great day. And, um, uh, we will, uh, see you again, uh, when we see you, maybe at the end of next week. Thank you all.
Bye.